Okay, let's get started here until again we get getting out of here. I will read it and you can read after me. And where it says "I," you will state your name right there. Other than that, it's fairly simple. So I'll have to have everybody stand up please. And raise your right hand. If you're left-handed, you still have to raise your right hand.
Aye.
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 Mary Jean.
Right.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear
That I will support the Constitution of the United States
That I will support the Constitution of the United States
And the Constitution of the State of Arkansas
And the Constitution of the State of Arkansas
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of council member.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of council member.
Upon which now I'm about to enter.
Upon which now I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Those papers, uh, let me just give them to Mr. Pratt. Let's see. What do you got to have? You gotta have their signature, their address, and their telephone. That telephone number on there is...
What you want for public.
Oh, okay, excuse me. Okay, you need to change that.
This is a public document.
See, they can only put on there.
Can I put down your phone number?
Yeah, I got that. Okay. And I'll sign them all. If y'all need copies, we can get them later. Okay, we need to go on into our organizational meeting. This is something that when we have election, you know, we always do. But now, well, a couple of years ago, the legislative passed an act that we had to do this every year. So we'll be doing it again next year. Okay, I will have the clerk call the roll please.
Brian Herring.
President.
Mary Jean Krueger.
President.
Mitch Magnus.
President.
David Wilson.
President.
Brian Oswald.
President.
Heath Kirkpatrick.
President.
Joel Williams.
President.
Deena Taylor.
President.
Okay. We have two pastors on here. I hope y'all don't want to fight over who does the prayer.
Well, it's his turn. He's up.
Hey, he's no, he's first councilman.
Okay, Heath, if you want, if you want to lead us in prayer, please remain standing for the place.
God, thank you for this new year and just thank you for this council team. Thank you for the city of Harrison. God, that we get to serve and represent the people and to do what is right and justice. God, thank you for your goodness. We just pray your blessings over this new year. Give us wisdom to manage the money, the people, the problems, and to represent, God, as you called us to these positions. And we just thank you for your grace and your goodness, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heath, you gotta say hurrah every time you hit the buzzer. That was what he always did and kind of let me down here. Okay, sorry.
It's not hurrah, it's fuhrah.
Fuhrah. Sorry.
I see that Mr. Taylor had kind of made an overview of the committees, suggestion overview. But we'll go through each one of them if you don't mind. So we can get them, if anybody's got anything they want to say. We'll go through the committees first and then we'll get into the, well, the liaisons. Okay. First up, we have community, environment, services, and welfare. Now, some of these we changed. I don't know if y'all looked at the last year's ones that we did a little wording change and dropped a few things or...
I don't know if you added anything like that yet.
I don't think so.
But, okay. This has been under past Mr. Williams' chair. Are we good with that? I'll let you all discuss.
I'm satisfied.
Good with it?
We wanted to change it, we didn't change it.
Wow, before you got here, even though you weren't legal.
That's why I said suggestions is a top.
Okay. Let's get into assignments over that. Mr. Williams will be the chair of that committee. Any changes on the...
Other than the committee.
The only, I'm gonna suggest that we change it. The only thing I noticed is that periodically we try to make sure there's somebody represented from each ward and there's nobody represented from that ward.
And that's fine.
That has to be, but just if you were gonna change anything, I would suggest.
These were just suggestions, I could've just changed it.
Hey, snow, just lay it on me.
That's right. It's a really active committee.
Oh, yeah. Yes. Gonna need an extra day.
Okay, we good with that, that committee?
Yes.
Hold on just a second. I'm just undermining where I've got my name. I just saw the recommendations before when I got in.
Yeah.
Nobody else saw me.
Nobody else saw me either. No, they only...
Kind of get a...
Well, you need, you'll have to speak up on this motion now. I'll tell you. Be quiet.
George, Dave, then I'm gonna charge you pride.
Okay, David? You wanna make a suggestion on that one?
Just one on that.
Okay, okay.
Sorry.
This is y'all's meeting. We're just on the first one.
And it's usually recommended that there's one person from each ward, I guess.
Doesn't have to be.
Doesn't have to be. But I think this, this group last time kind of decided they kind of like to see that. I don't think that's a even unwritten rule. It's never been, never even been a, let's say, a protocol in the past.
What's the minimum amount of people that need to be on a committee?
Need to be four anyway.
Need four, okay.
Of course, that's up to you. You can have one chairman.
Counting the chairman, there is four. Yeah. But counting the chairperson, remember, there is four.
Oh, okay.
Without, and if you need to, if you were looking at trying to get off of one. Maybe the question might be better to ask is how much time is actually involved? I was joking around when there's a lot of, it's really not that much time involved, isn't it?
With Joel, you don't spend a lot of time in meetings. In fact, Joel has never had both me and Deena coffee or anything. But he does, he does make good coffee.
You do, you do see where the donuts are at.
What you concerned with?
And then we'll work out meeting times and stuff like that. I'm just...
Well, the committee meetings, committees are usually held on the second, Thursday of the month. And so we'll be here as a group at that time we hold committee. It's one large group, but we're just speaking to each of our committee members at the time. The only time you'd meet individually as a committee is if there was a special meeting.
Oh, okay, like we discussed earlier.
Right, and last year, the only time that any committee met, commanded, acknowledged was finance.
And, uh, yeah, public safety.
Public safety, yes, you're right.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm on with that.
Yeah, normally, normally you won't have anything, well, I say that, but every once in a while something comes up that a committee would have to meet separately, discuss something. But normally, it's all at the committee meetings. Regular scheduled committee meetings.
Yeah, that's...
Just do them all at the same time.
Yeah, that's fine. Thank you for answering questions.
Okay, we'll move on to finance and Mitch is aggressively wanting to be chairman of that again. It was mentioned, I don't know. It was mentioned, I do not know if we need to have all eight councilmen on that committee, but that's up to y'all.
I will say, when we tried to have these special committee meetings last year during the grid preparation and analysis, it was difficult to get times because of all eight council members, since it wasn't a regularly scheduled time. It was difficult to find time that all eight could be there.
And I, and I agree with that because I was at those meetings. I think the biggest problem we ran into whenever, because it was my suggestion, was that there was so much conversation about getting a balanced budget and it was so important to everybody. I think we all wanted input on it.
Correct.
But at this point, I think we can probably take a census of who would like to be on that council and maybe that would be a better way to judge who needs to be on the council. And I would like to be on that council.
Well, I'll make this suggestion. If you are gonna cut it down, that you have at least, and this was one that we need somebody to be toward. And I think probably what you need to do, if you cut it down to four people... Are we looking at cutting it to four people?
Right.
Okay.
Brian.
You, you people in each ward need to get together and say who's gonna do it. That's what I, I suggested.
Brian, we want one.
Okay.
So we got Brian.
Okay, we got Brian there.
And we got Mitch more too.
Got Mitch more too.
I can give you, can I offer a little his, a little history? Yes. When we, when we used to be this way, where there was only one councilman per event, after you got through all your budget stuff and all the headaches, you almost had to have all those meetings over again to explain to everybody what you've done over the last two months. We would have, when Pat Moles was finance chair and there were only four of us, then we would go to council and take it back to council. And it was a nightmare because you then had to rehash everything you've just done to bring the other four up to speed.
Right.
So that you might consider keep that in, take that into consideration. The other is, we would have arguments sometimes over positions where both wanted to be on there. And then if it was...
If they wanted to be on there, that's fine.
We could put them on. So, I mean, if you're gonna limit it to only one per...
I'm not limiting it, I'm just saying, you know.
You know, we could leave it with all council people and you can attend the meeting, fine. And if you don't?
Well...
If you can.
You need to be...
I don't like that option because like in my position, you know, I'm limited to what I can attend because I can't be in two federally, federal programs at one time outside of 3:45 in the afternoon. So if you have a meeting during the day, it limits me from coming. But if there's one beyond 3:45, I'm all able to do that.
So you, you suggest we leave it like it is?
I, I would suggest we leave it like it is.
I don't have a problem. That's up to y'all.
David, you, can Heath have any input?
I'm kind of the same way, seeing him being in a public school system.
So we just have to, like, our meeting's after...
For me, probably about four, yeah.
Four after.
Well, if we, if we do what we did last time, I'd like, with the issues we would have, I would like then turn around and have a subcommittee meeting if, because like I said, that was a problem.
Well, you could inform a subcommittee within the...
Right, because our problem was, we'd say, okay, seven o'clock, well, that, these two can't be there then. Okay, let's do it at two o'clock in the afternoon, well, these two can't be there then. And it was always a different penalty. And I know there were two aldermen specifically that complained to me that they couldn't meet in, come to any of those special committee meetings. And I said, you know, you gotta pick a time.
Well, at the same time, I hear what you're saying. I totally trust what you're leading, so I don't have a problem with that.
But I mean, I, I don't have a problem living it the same way at eight and we just form a subcommittee later.
Since we're talking about that, I'll throw this out too. It's, if we're, some committees having a meeting, if, even though you're not on there, it's probably better you can't. If you can come to that meeting, you need to come.
Well, it's public.
It's public anyway.
It's public.
And that way, they don't have to turn around and resolve different things. You've been in that meeting, you heard what's going on, and it just seems to work that way. But I know everybody can't make every meeting. It's just a, that's just a fact of life. Okay, so we'll leave it. Yes, sir.
And every year, committee, committees are formed every year regardless of election or anything like that.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Okay.
And you can change anytime you want.
Yeah, you wouldn't change this next minute. Or that. Okay. We'll move on. Internal affairs. Somebody must have read my mind on that one.
I put David on there because of his background in technology. That was where I was headed with that.
Yeah, I, I, when I thought about it, I thought about being on there too. I just didn't necessarily feel a vision, chairing, I don't know what's involved in that.
Well, you're gonna get hit this year, I'll tell you that.
I probably got a sneak peek the other night.
Don't stress over, you've got these three gentlemen here and you've got the rest of us, so don't sweat it.
After cleaning up some of the system you already have, this will be cake.
Brian, you'll probably be working with Luke a lot.
And Wade.
He's very good and very helpful, so.
Yeah, I'm fine.
We're trying to upgrade our technology here in the city and, and you know, we've talked about it.
Yeah.
The two of you both know that language, it's always gonna be easier for you guys to talk to each other. The tech language.
Yeah.
You're gonna, you know, be in there talking Greek and we're not gonna watch talk about it.
In case anybody does know, David, David's an IT wonder and he does a skill, he does a skill system. He does a, he's an IT person for a school. Okay, now look at your assignments on that. You have a lot to speak up, so.
No, I, I said, look at me.
Okay, we'll move on. Okay, public safety.
Or it won't be like it was last year, will it?
Well, we do have some...
That's up to you. Why is it always gonna start off with, there's gonna be some issues? I thought you said you're the chairman.
I thought you said you got your crystal ball fixed, so I'd be able to tell if there's gonna be problems.
But I think we kept something out of that also, did we? I think we kept something out of that. But anyway. Okay. Mary Jean, speak up, young lady.
That looks good to me. Brian, are you gonna help us?
Maybe.
Assignments?
Thank you.
Assignments.
Yep.
We all right on assignments? We'll move down to public works and transportation.
Brian, you said you wanted to be back as chair.
Yeah, that's, that's great.
Brian, are you okay with that?
Yeah.
Brian wanted to be back.
Sure. That's just one I can do. That's not a problem. And still maintain position.
We got, well, you've been on vacation, so we got something to hit you with already.
Okay.
Yeah, you can definitely take it.
Road die, you know, we can take it.
Okay, look at the assignment.
You are not allowed to say those two words this year.
No road die, yes.
Okay, so he'll still be on the committee?
You talking about for which one, public transportation?
Yeah. Brian wanted to be back as chair on that one.
On public work or some shit?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
So, so leave Brian Oswald chair or, I mean, you guys? Yeah, Brian Oswald chair.
And Brian, you're on the committee, right?
Not on that one.
Public works and transportation, you're on first.
I'll work change.
No, I'm not on that one right now. If Brian takes over that one, I'm good.
I just didn't know if you were...
If I was being bumped down?
Just making notes on who's on committees and...
They'll send out, or this just really good at sending out a fresh one, everybody's like...
Yeah, we'll update it all.
I said what you did, I wrote everything down and he sent it to me and I said, why did I do all that extra work? His looks nicer.
Are the assignments okay that's suggested here by then or would you have to change anything?
Brian, would you be on the assigned council?
No, I'm kidding. I don't mind being on it, it is, it, either way is fine.
Public works? Is that what you're on there?
Yes.
So we're assigning Brian Herring as councilman's side to public works.
Heck, with that one, we'll go down to resources and policies. Mr. Taylor really liked this one, so I wanted to stay there.
That's my baby. If anybody else wants that position, I will widely step down, while I'm enjoying being in last year's form.
It's Chris's.
Oh, I'm in the spirit.
Oh, you are.
Anything, is there anything that you want?
That's our affair, just really, you think that. That's right.
Brian, are you okay with, are you...
Yeah, I'm good with that. I am.
Mary Jean?
Yes.
Okay, we're through, uh, many. Okay, we're gonna move over to appointments. Get them all. Planning commission. Brian said he'd like to step down from that, that one. And Mr. Joel Williams has come forward and said that he would be more glad to do that. You know, Joel has some experience already, he's said on many of those meetings also. That would be my recommendation for that position.
I think that'd be a great recommendation.
I agree.
Agreed.
Okay. Okay, the parks and recs.
I might have that one again.
Okay, Mr. Magnus wants to stay on there. Any other takers? Okay, no other takers, so Mr. Magnus, looks like you're there. The perpetual care board.
I want it.
Okay.
Something, because I like digging up people.
Let me go back, uh, we've got two new members here and I'm sorry, I'm gonna backtrack here a little bit. The planning commission, the council by law has to have a council member on there. And that usually meets once a month and it's in the middle of the day. It's usually around one o'clock. I think it's about the...
Third, the fourth, fifth.
Fourth, fifth. Okay, so that, there, a council member has to serve on that one. The parks, they are a voting member of that commission. The Parks and Rec is only a liaison which the Parks and Rec commission, if they want something brought to the council, it's usually filtered to that liaison. They are non-voting on there, they're not really a member of that commission. The perpetual care board. This meets at the, whenever the chairman wants to meet, when they got issues coming up. Okay, well, we have within our city, we have four cemeteries that our cemetery commission takes care of. And they are in charge of monies that we've got invested. And actually, our investments take care of our cemeteries, believe it or not. Uh, we've done real well on that over the last several years. But a chairman, the chairman of that committee is from the council. And that was set by August 2, was it not?
It's been on state statute.
State statute? No.
It's, it's, it's a local ordinance, but it's been in place a long time.
Okay. But I'm trying to, I didn't, you, we got some new council members here, I kind of want to include you in on a little bit.
And the meetings are open to the, to any other council that chooses to attend.
But we had, they had to have a, one meeting at least a year. Yeah, I think.
Yeah.
Two or three.
Okay. Also, within our ordinances, since we have a CATPC commission, we have to have two members from this, from the council members to serve on that CATPC board. They are voting members of that board. And if you look down there, uh, David said he would serve, Mr. Wilson, and Brian Herring would, said that he would like to remain on that also. And that's my suggestion on those two. Okay, of all those appointments, does anybody have anything to say about them? Okay. All right, now...
Can I go back to...
Yes, sir.
I apologize, I don't, I was gonna see maybe if I could, at least for this year, just sit off of that, not be on the resources and policies. That'd be okay, no offense, but we got, Mitch is wanting to, he's okay with that. I don't wanna overcommit myself.
So we're gonna take you off of the resources and policy. That's up to you.
That'll still leave me on three committees right there and then plus the...
There, that's still eight, four on there.
Yeah.
Does anybody else wanna?
I want Heath to be on.
Oh, you want Heath to be on there?
Heath, are you okay with that?
Sure.
All right.
We had no extra meetings Thursday, we had a meeting with that, so it was, it was...
Okay.
Oh, wow. I'll change my mind now.
Okay. Since we've gone through this, I will entertain a motion for the appointments and the committees. I have a motion and a second. Does anybody have any discussion on it now?
Are we concerned about individuals serving on too many? As Mr. Wilson pointed out.
That's up to them.
I don't, I don't think that's an issue myself, I'm just pointing it out.
Y'all, we need to look at that, but...
For example, I've got three.
If you're not happy, speak up now.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
You want some more?
No.
You want on another?
We can work on it.
Okay, any further discussion? There being no further discussion, all in favor of aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same. Motion carried, we're set for this year, ladies and gentlemen. Okay. Oh, I'm sorry. We're going into something else now. I shouldn't have, I jumped the gun on you.
It's all right.
All right. We need a mayor pro temp.
Well, Deena's did a really good job doing that last year when you were unavailable.
Well, I would like to nominate her, given that she's the longest-serving councilman. I don't want to set a precedent that she serves longer than anyone else, so.
Make a motion that she...
I would second that.
Yes.
I'll have a motion to second any discussion on this.
They all sure you want to do this.
Hey, you did a good job. The one time you got paid.
Mayor is... Who's second? The longest-serving, you said, is your job.
She did have a senior, yeah.
We're not talking about just your council. No, we're talking about full job.
No.
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 You sure?
Yeah, they changed that.
Oh, did they?
Yeah, they changed it.
Okay.
The only thing a mayor pro temp does is preside over the council meetings and...
I herd cats, that's all I do.
If you, Joey didn't read your paper, I'm sorry. But anyway, anyway, I have a motion from Mr. Magnus, who's second.
Second of the, over.
Any further discussion? There being none, all in favor of aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same. Okay, next on the list, that's not on y'all's list, but it's on mine. The dates of the council meeting, the committees and the regular scheduled council meeting.
I like the way we meet now. Because I'm obligated on Monday nights, three.
Monday nights?
Yep, they used to be on that.
Oh.
But I like it, but Thursday. We can't have it on Wednesday because we got these two preacher, you know?
Wow.
But wait a minute, we need to have it on Wednesday.
And we would love to have you at church, anytime.
I said my sermon yesterday.
Our committee meetings at this time are on the second Tuesday of each month.
Thursday.
Thursday, Thursday, now, where's your... And at six o'clock, right?
Yes.
Okay. The regular scheduled council meeting is on the fourth Thursday of each month, six o'clock. And I'll entertain a motion if that's so be.
Did that work out good with you and Luke on the way the numbers were coming in? That was the reason that we...
That was, that's the reason we went that way.
It worked.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
I second it because I like Thursdays.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion?
Does it affect our new council?
I like, I like Thursdays.
Six o'clock, all right.
Okay, there being no further discussion, all in favor of aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same. Motion carried. Okay. I have one other. Guess what? First meeting.
You're not gonna be here.
We have a municipal league meeting 11th, 12th, and 13th of January, and since you've all voted to build a committee meeting on the 12th, I will be out of pocket.
And so will I.
What's I say, are any of the others going?
Yeah, getting ready to say.
We can put that meeting off.
Okay, can we have it before or after?
Well, I could move it to the 19th.
The committee can meet.
I cannot meet on the 19th.
I could meet on the 14th, the 19th would be.
Yeah, they, they control their own meeting, y'all control your own meeting.
I think y'all moved it. Would the Tuesday prior to that affect you guys?
The 10th?
10th?
That would be better.
Everybody else, does the Tuesday prior work for everybody?
It'd have to be after school.
Yeah, and.
What, it'd be six o'clock?
It would be six.
Yeah.
I can do the fifth, no, I can't do, I can't do this.
Well, we got.
Can we do the 19th and then have both meetings that one night?
No, the 19th, I can meet.
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six, twenty-six.
That's up to y'all. We got several things that will be coming up.
We've done the quarter back to that.
But you'll be back.
Oh, yeah, I'll be here, it's just 11th, 12th, 13th, I'm kinda out of pocket.
So can we do 26th, 5:30?
I, I would almost rather it be after the 11th, 12th, and 13th, if you're gonna be at municipal league, there's something that you might be able to bring.
Bring to the table, yeah.
Bring to the table, so I'm, I'm saying that we do it like the 16th or 17th.
I'll be on until the eight, until then.
What about the 19th?
Then I think so, I can meet.
Y'all can meet, I just won't be able to be there.
Well, then that's up to me.
It's for me.
We could do it a while prior to the meeting, but. On the 26th, but we got several things that's coming up.
Well, I would suggest either the 19th, even with Mr. Herring not being able to be there. Or that, that night having a committee before on the 26th, but.
That's it.
I'll leave that for the.
I'll be going on the 11th, 12th, 18th.
And you've got kids every Tuesday, right? So, then I'm, I'm, I'm good with the 26th, maybe having committee meeting in October, and they're gonna be meeting on the 6th.
Might make that motion?
Certainly.
Second it.
David, are you okay with that?
I have a motion to have the 5:30 meeting on the 26th for committee and a second. Any further discussion? There being none, all in favor by aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same. Motion carried. All right, ladies and gentlemen, that's all I have, does anybody else have anything? I appreciate y'all serving, for you new council members. James, you got any FLOI booklets or anything you wanna pass out, or any of that kinda stuff?
I, I don't have any with me, I can probably get some more.
I had one in there, so, I don't know, y'all, y'all need to be attentive of that, that's for sure. I think you all did a fine job, it's interesting work, and believe it or not, you'll, you'll run and say, "Well, I didn't know we did that," but that's what happens, that's what happens, so, and I appreciate, I'm glad to have you all on board. Office, I wanted to say again that mayor's office is open, well, almost 24 hours, but anytime you wanna visit, I actually encourage council people to come in on different issues, I'd rather have them talk to me or somebody else about different issues, and maybe we'll get it worked out differently, but. I want to say, Happy New Year! And I'll entertain a motion for adjournment. I have a motion. Now, here's a second. I need your papers. All in favor, by aye?